I'd like to call the regular board meeting order for the village of Shorewood on April the twenty eighth of the year twenty twenty. Uh, again, because of unique circumstances, uh, well, that is out of the flag by trying to do it over the phone. Uh, just everybody salute and your time. Uh, now we took a roll call that Diane, uh, take you later, would you please?
Mayor Chapman.
Here.
Dan Anderson.
Here.
Steve Brockman.
Here.
C.C. Debold.
Here.
Art Kirkland. Hello? Here. Oh, Tony Luciano.
Here.
Andy and Warren.
Here.
Yeah, so if you, if you're not talking, it'd be really good to mute your, your mic on your phone. Uh, there's a lot of feedback coming back in, especially if people chuck them papers around in front of them. Uh, just to make it easier on everybody, it did went very well at our last meeting. I thought everybody did a fantastic job getting through that for our first time. I mean, we've all been on conference calls and different things, but a board meeting might be a little bit different, so. Everybody, if you could just do that, uh, and I'll do the same when I'm not talking, which is most of the time. But anyway, uh, I'd like to open it up, uh, are there any citizens who have called into the meeting? Who would like to address the village board of Shorewood, uh, tonight? I'll give you, uh, a few seconds to unmute and, uh, speak up. Okay, Jim, you, do you have anybody that you see that signed in? Do we have any extra sign-ins?
There's a total of twenty people signed in, and my count shows seventeen should be on the roll call.
Okay, so there are people.
There's three, there's, there's three people out there.
Okay, all right, welcome to the, uh, Shorewood Village Board meeting. Uh, I'd like to move on, being how many citizens, uh, who wish to address the board tonight? I'd like to move on to tonight's consent agenda, which consists of the approval of the special meeting minutes for February eighteenth, and the two approval of the regular meeting minutes for April fourteenth, and approval of accounts payable in the amount of three hundred and two thousand, three dollars and seventy-one cents. Are there any items, uh, trustee, would like, uh, removed for further review? Or are there any questions on tonight's, uh, consent item?
No, this is Dan Anderson. I'd make a motion to approve the consent.
Uh, I just wanted to mention, uh, this is Tony Luciano. I just wanted to mention, I didn't get any minutes.
They were emailed.
All right, I missed them then, so I'll just look them over if I need to add any, any edits next meeting.
Um, okay, uh, Jim, will you have, uh, any comment on that? That, do we know that that email went out or?
I, I believe it did. Um, I can double check.
It, it actually went out twice.
Oh. Yeah, I got it, I got it in my box, in, in my email box.
And it, it showed Tony received it, but, um.
I probably didn't get it opened, but, cause I went in for the packet, and I probably thought it would be in there, so I'll just look at it. I'm sure it's fine.
Yeah, okay, you, you can be comfortable at and after the fact, if you do have a problem, you can always get a hold of Diane, right?
Right.
Okay, uh.
Mayor Chapman, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but is there anybody else on this call besides the board, Dave Solomon, and Jim Calata?
Uh, yes, we've got Brian Walsh on, uh, well, so have, uh, did you mention Silverman? Dave Silverman's on.
Yeah.
Okay, Jim, Jim, I'm.
What was that?
John from Building, the chief. And Brian Walsh. Do, do you have him?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Okay, uh, we had a motion to approve the consent agenda by Anderson, but we have a second.
Debold seconded.
Okay, uh, Diane, roll call, please.
Dan Warren.
Yes.
Tony Luciano.
Yes.
Art Kirkland.
Yes.
C.C. Debold.
Yes.
Steve Brockman.
Yes.
Dan Anderson.
Yes. Okay, Senate General, uh, is approved as, as presented. Uh, move on. Are there any communications to the board, Diane?
No, there are not.
Okay, I have no proclamations, and, uh, the only comments that I, that I would give is, uh, you know, the, it continues, the numbers keep, uh, moving around out there, uh. The coronavirus is still amongst us. It's still causing us problems, I think. Uh, I don't know where the board is updated on the Alden incident. Uh, Chief, would you like to bring us up on what really happened at Alden, just to make sure all the board, board members are on board with it, okay?
Yes, sir. So, the Herald News reported on Sunday, I believe, in the paper, based upon data received from the Illinois Department of Public Health Thrub Site, um, particularly in their section on, uh, nursing homes and care facilities, that the Alden facility had four cases, um, of coronavirus and one fatality. And the fire chief, Andy Doyle, and his deputy chief, Howard Hoffman, followed up with that, and all of the care facilities. As it turns out, the four cases are staff, and they are all of people that have not been there in some time. And the fatality, although it was attributed to the Alden facility, was unfortunately from a gentleman, I believe it was a gentleman, but from a, a, a patient who had been there and had not been there in three or four weeks. Uh, it's confusing why it is being attributed to the Alden facility. But the important thing here is that not at the Alden, nor at any of the other care facilities in Shorewood, is there a systemic or a, a focal point problem? Um, we, you know, we do have forty-six cases reported by ID, IDPH in the village as of today, but we do not have, uh, um, for lack of a better designation, something like Symphony in Jolietta Market.
Okay, any questions for the chief on that matter? I'll give you a little more information on how bad things can get when false information starts to circulate. Uh, I got a, a, I got an email all the way from the East Coast about the Alden situation, that they had actually heard about it in their news system out on the East Coast. That, uh, that we had a Shorewood, uh, nursing home that had, that had one death and four incidents, and wasn't reported, so it's, uh, it's, it's a, it's a real problem today in the United States and around the world, but the numbers just get, just get sloppy, and, uh, we can only do the best we can do and go by the best numbers that we all think are somewhat accurate. Uh, I still believe this is a dangerous situation that we're in, uh, but then again, that's my opinion, okay? And, uh, I'm not adding up the numbers, I'm not the one that's going out, I'm not a scientist, so I, I, all I can do is, is go by what supposedly the professionals are telling me, uh, to do. Uh, therefore, I have asked Dave and I asked Jim, uh, to work on it in ordinance, just to be in its preparation stage to make it a little stricter here in the village of Shorewood for masking if that ordinance is necessary to bring to the village board. If we got into a bad situation, we really need to have some things to back up what the executive order is supposed to look like from the state right now. And we don't really have anything to back it up, so if you hear that I've been working on that with the administrator and legal, that's, that's the only reason. I want something in place, ready to go if we need it. Any questions? Okay, if not, I'd like to move on to tonight's order of business, which is item number one. Considerations to approval of a resolution providing certain additional emergency release for the water, sewer, and refuse charges. Mr. Calata.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, before I begin with that, I just wanted to make two, uh, clarifying statements. First, um, I wanted, I wanted to know that, uh, two department heads are also on the call, uh, that would be Ann Burkholder and, uh, Kelly Chrissy, uh, just so you have that on the record. And the other thing is, you know, we do allow for people, uh, residents to submit comments via email. Uh, I have not received any, uh, email comments for tonight's meeting. So, moving on to the agenda item, uh, at hand, uh, so, uh, what is on, uh, before you is a resolution that would expand our existing utility relief program. Um, this is based on some input that I have received from elected officials. Um, it is also something that, uh, I recommend because of, um, what I have noticed in terms of the applicants for the program thus far. Uh, I can say that we have about, uh, sixty individuals that have been approved, uh, for the relief program. Uh, there's been at least a dozen or so folks that have, uh, applied, um, but have not yet provided, um, sufficient documentation, uh, that they are receiving unemployment insurance. Um, some of the individuals that have applied, um, have, you know, have been unable to get unemployment insurance, um, for a couple of different reasons, and, and some of which really, um, you know, have no bearing on, on, you know, their ability, um, to meet most criteria, except for the fact that perhaps they didn't work long enough with their employer. Uh, they, they may have recently been hired on, um, and were soon after, uh, let go, uh, laid off because of COVID nineteen. Um, and the state requires a certain period of time or certain amount of earnings from the employer before, uh, accepting that person on unemployment insurance. So as a result, I know of at least one, possibly two individuals that would fit that criteria. Um, and there's also several people, um, you know, that have shared the fact that, you know, they're, they are, uh, independent consultants, uh, you know, so they do not, uh, they're not eligible also for unemployment insurance. Um, so there's, there's a couple of gaps here that, uh, what this resolution would do is it would expand the opportunity to them to get relief, um, provided that they are able to, uh, have their employer, uh, submit a letter, uh, that explains that they are, uh, had a significant reduction in hours, uh, possibly even laid off, and, um, and it was because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, so the, the employer, um, would need to also include in their letter, uh, their tax ID number. Um, so some of this is just to kind of make sure that, you know, it's a, it's a legitimate claim. Um, you know, there are certain businesses that, you know, are, have been considered non-essential per the governor's order, and, uh, there's certainly people, um, you know, who could benefit, uh, because their, their salons and, and other business establishments, you know, had to close, and, um, so this would, I think, help in many ways, uh, to address some of those individuals, uh, that are not able to get unemployment insurance. Um, and it would, it would follow the same parameters otherwise, you know, it would still be two months, uh, assuming they're still in the same situation in, in terms of being unemployed, um, and, and there would need to be, um, an acknowledgement on their part that they, uh, have been, uh, put in the situation they're in due to COVID nineteen. Um, so in general, I, I think that kind of wraps up, um, the, what this resolution would do, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Debold, I have a question for you then, Jim. So, in, in regards to, so in, in respect to number two, where it says residents who are self-employed or independent contractors who provide a letter which certifies their income has significantly been reduced because of COVID nineteen pandemic, the letter should also provide a tax ID. So, how, how are we, how is that going to be addressed? I guess my simple question is, is it a, a resident that's an independent contractor submitting a letter on their own behalf that just says they're impacted? I mean, I understand that employee on that side of it, I'm just curious how we're viewing this one?
Yeah, I, I, I think what we're saying is, is if, if you have your own business, um, or if you are an independent contractor, so it's, it's really two different types of scenarios there, but, um, under each of those circumstances, you know, yes, um, if I own a salon, for example, and I'm the, you know, I'm the one that's out of work, um, I would be submitting, um, a letter on my behalf, uh, basically. Um, I think there, there's a, you know, not a significant number of folks which are probably in that situation, uh, it's hard to know exactly. But yes, they would be submitting a letter on their own behalf.
Would a letter in, in, in that case, would that one need to be notarized?
Um, that's not currently in the resolution. I don't know if Attorney Silverman wants to, to speak to that issue. He may have some thoughts about whether, uh, a notary, uh, I'm not sure about the availability of notaries nowadays, too. Uh, that might be one consideration, but maybe Attorney Silverman would like.
It's a fair statement. I just didn't know, yeah, my concern simply was, uh, for self-employed, I didn't know if we essentially need a outside person simply to verify signature or something of that nature.
Yeah, C.C., this is Dave. I mean, I, I sort of agree with Jim's assessment. I know in the law practice, we've been having a really hard time with notary publics and things like that.
Sure, sure, sure.
Big obstacle, so the, the language in that section two is a little different than one, because it requires a certification, and the thought, you know, was kind of work with Jim to maybe come up with some language that's more of a, more of a under oath, but not necessarily notarized, you know, that they're certifying these are the actual circumstances, and it could add a little bit more, uh, I guess, of a serious note to the letter.
No, that's fine, and I didn't know, uh, is there going to be some sort of framework, though, referenced for that one? You know, or is it for an independent contractor to submit that? I guess I just want to make sure, as long as, uh, as long as the attorney's on board with how a, uh, an independent contractor or a resident who's self-employed is going to submit a letter to meet a, um, you know, a, a proper certification, I get, you know, that's all I want to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, and Jim and I can certainly work together, like, we understand your concerns, and probably everybody shares the same concerns, and we can, but, you know, we, at the end of the day, we just have to be, get people, we have to trust them somewhat, but we can get them to certify it, and then if, if for some reason we find out it's fraudulent, we could go back and have a conversation with them.
No, no, that, that's fine, that's all my, I just wanted, this, this is my only question about it.
Yeah, C.C., this is Anderson. I got, uh, this might make you feel a little better. There is a website, uh, state Illinois website where you can log in and verify the state or the tax ID number, and that'll give you some more information about who possesses that. And, uh, you know, it, it's a little better way of verifying it, and we, you know, we use it at work probably a couple of times a week, so there is a bad option out there.
That would make sense. No, and that, that would make sense, it's just, I just want to make sure that we have a, a mechanism, for lack of better terms, to try to help verify that some of those, uh, potential applicants, that's all.
Okay, Anthony.
Tony Luciano, I don't know if you can hear me, but, uh, I'm in agreement, uh, with this new supplement on the basis that we're verifying what, uh, we're giving relief to. However, as I mentioned before, I'm concerned about, uh, the first resolution, because I think we should also have some type of verification to make sure that people are, have, do have a reduction in their income, and we're not giving relief to someone who is getting more money or equivalent money to what they were making with, uh, unemployment insurance. In a letter I, uh, email I, uh, copied you each individually on, I went through a scenario explaining what the unemployment benefit is right now, and based on that, most people will be getting at least a thousand dollars a week. So I would think that we need to verify the fact that they are receiving that income from the unemployment insurance, and that it is a positive reduction when they receive that. And I can simply be verified by, uh, a simple form just stating, what was your weekly net income before you were laid off? What is your weekly benefit from unemployment insurance? And what is the loss or reduction in your pay? And then have them simply sign it, attesting that they are unemployed and the information they're providing is, uh, correct. I would like to see that added to the first resolution, as you said, we could possibly amend it, because I think it puts us in a position that we did our due diligence, but, and that we are not giving taxpayers money out to, uh, people who have not lost any income. Uh, I don't know how everyone else feels about like you're this, if we're going to verify this, we should also verify that. That's all I have to say on it.
Okay, anybody else?
This is Cookie. I was not, that people were getting unemployment plus additional income in addition, so that's if we're verifying, you know, additional verification is, is not a bad thing. I, I think it's covering our ability to give this to people that are in need, and it gives us a better way to answer to other residents.
Uh, I've only got positive statements on it. I don't know who's getting all the negative statements, but, uh, I've only got positive statements that it's nice that the village is doing, is trying to do something for people that have gone off on unemployment. I, I realize that some, some people are making more, there's other people that aren't. Um, and, uh, we all heard that. When we first started out, people wanted to give everybody the whole thing off, okay? That was a bad, that was a bad idea to begin with, in my estimation, so we worked our way down where we tried to put something in place in order to get the system kicked off. I think they did a good job, and they got it kicked off, and, and, uh, it's, it is in place right now. Are you talking about redoing that entire first part of this thing, trustee?
No, no, I'm just saying that we could add some type of verification, just to see what they're receiving for unemployment. My understanding is the majority of people receiving unemployment are receiving equivalent or more than they normally would in their net pay. And I'm concerned that we're giving taxpayers money out, it's not a lot of money, but every dollar of taxpayers' money we're stewards of, and I think it's important for us to do due diligence and make sure we're not giving money to people who don't need it. It would just be a simple.
Let me clarify, yeah, excuse me, let me clarify, the taxpayers, the, the tax dollars. This is, this is a, this is a fee that is charged by us, by an enterprise fund, by the water company. We get breaks, and in a lot of situations, we waive different fees to different organizations, other taxing bodies. We waive fees to churches. We, we're not, we're not dealing with tax salaries, we're waiving a fee, and we do that all the time. Uh, do we want to, do we want to ask Holy Family to justify that they're not making enough money in order to get a building permit fee waived, or sue a tax on fee waived? Is that what we're saying here?
No, Mayor, I think you're taking out of context of what I'm saying.
Oh, great, you are.
Well, what it started out as, and where it's at now, is two different things. What I'm saying is this, I'm not expecting us to ask Holy Family or anyone else for money. I do believe that even though, uh, any monies we waived would have been taxpayers' money if we accepted it. So consequently, what I'm saying is this, I don't feel that we're in good position to give people relief who are earning equivalent or more than they normally would get. Now, this relief is, they're getting an extra six hundred dollars a week. So, a, a person who is unemployed, who made fifteen dollars an hour, or working four dollars a week, will receive nine hundred dollars a week from now, April sixth, um, to July twenty-sixth. I don't see we need to give that person or a person receiving that kind of money relief, and we have people, other people who need it, that we can give it to. And I think we should verify what their income is, just to cover our, cover ourselves, so in the event that something does come up, we did our due diligence to prevent something from happening. There's going to be some people that are going to fall through the cracks, but at least I want to be able to say we did everything we could to prevent that.
Okay, anybody else have anything here?
That's supposed to be, that's an amendment for the, for the resolution from, uh, two weeks ago, so that has nothing to do with the one we're talking about tonight.
Well, we can add as a supplement to, to this one, is a, a, a supplement that you have to provide verification for unemployment.
You have to provide verification to what?
To the amount of money you're receiving from the unemployment, unemployment, uh, insurance, and also what your, your net income was before you got laid off.
Okay, so let me ask you this, if you did a better verification of how much the net income is, what are you looking for? What's the cutoff that's to determine that it's too much money?
Well, I would suspect that, uh, the cutoff would be if you're making ten percent less than what your net pay was, that that would be something that you would give them relief for. If you're making less than ten percent or equivalent or more, I don't think it should give relief.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just up to everyone to decide that. I'm just stating my position. I think it's a, a solid position, because I can't see the village expending relief to someone who is not seeing a reduction in the income.
Well, I don't know, I don't think, I don't think there's a good way of verifying their income, uh, and I don't know, I don't think you have a good way of, of picking a threshold.
Well, the threshold's very simple, Dan. How much did you earn on your last tax net pay? I earned a thousand dollars. What is your employment benefit, unemployment insurance benefit? It's nine hundred and eighty dollars. The difference in the loss of pay is twenty dollars. You don't qualify. And you sign, if you qualify, then you sign it. If it's more, less than ten percent, and less than ten percent, you qualify and you get it. I mean, it's something that has to be worked out, but I think we, if we're going to verify this for people that need it, I think we should verify it for the people who possibly won't lose any pay.
The, the verification on his second part. The, the verification on his second part is, is really a request for the employer to sign a letter. That's the verification. The tax identification number is.
Huh?
For this, this supplement or for the res- resolution?
For the, for the, for the amendment to the resolution that we just put out.
Okay. I, I, you know, what I was suggesting was that it was a simple three questions. What was your earnings? What are your benefits? And what's your loss? And a simple sign, statement that you verify that you have a reduction in income and have them sign it. And it, that saves everyone a lot of trouble with checking things. And if it's, and then we find out that somewhere down the line that they were, didn't give us the correct information, we could still getting the monies back.
The, uh, uh, sixty-one people that have already been approved by Mr. Guadalupe, are you talking about taking them off?
Well, mayor, if, if, if someone is, is making a thousand a week and they're going to get eleven hundred from, uh, unemployment benefits, they're making a hundred dollars more a week than they normally make, I would think that we would have to take them off. That's my opinion.
Yeah. Okay, that's your opinion.
As I said, it's my opinion.
We put together a program, five trustees passed.
Mayor, we put together a program and you said we could have a supplement to it, okay?
And we, we are.
The rest of the board is not interested, they can say so. But I feel comfortable that in saying what I'm saying, I'm pointing out something I think that we should put a serious look at.
Dave, what, what has to be done?
You know, I, you know, first of all, there's no amendment to that resolution on the agenda. I suppose we could squeeze it into this one, but I guess I'd be interested in hearing, mayor, um, you know, if, if that's the consensus of the board. If it, if it is, then we can think about it a little harder. And if it's not, then let's move on. I mean, I, I, I also think it'd be difficult, Tony, to go back to those sixty-one people and say, look, we've changed the rules after you've gotten this waiver and now you've got to pay us the money back. I think that would be sort of an untenable situation to put us in and, and, and also I guess.
There's been no money given out, Dave. This is a waiver of a bill that they have to pay.
Well, I mean, I know. I, I guess you get, but I guess what I'm saying, Tony, is we've said you don't owe it and then you go back and say you do owe it because we've changed the program. I, you know, I, I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but I, I guess I'd be interested in hearing, um, you know, if this is something that, that a majority are interested in, let's talk about it. And if it's not, let's move on.
I don't want to, I don't want to waste anyone's time if everyone else isn't interested in doing it. I just thought it was important that I made the statement to point out that there are people who are, would receive relief who do not deserve it. That's it. I mean, if what's important doesn't matter breathing about their time.
Yeah. The way we find that out is, uh, we get somebody to make a motion to approve this resolution and then see if it gets voted down. And that's the way, and we can move on and get to our other business here, other side of things.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion that, I'll make a motion that I would like to add an amendment, a, a amendment to the supplement to get verification for, for the original resolution on verifying unemployment insurance received to make sure that there's a reduction in the person's income before they receive relief.
Verified by what?
Verified by the form I mentioned, verified by a form indicating what their income was and what they receiving benefits and assign.
Can we actually do this right now? Let, let's see.
My question for, it's, she, and I, and my question is to the attorney, are we crisscrossing with the motion that's presented? Are we crisscrossing two different ordinances, a one that's already been approved versus one that's on the table?
Well, yeah. I, I do. So, why don't we move on? Somebody make a motion to approve the resolution.
Well, look, uh, mayor, can you just, Mr. Luciano made a motion, so I guess we need to see if that gets seconded. And if it doesn't, then we can move on. And if it does, then let's talk about it.
Okay. Need a second for the motion to redraft the resolution or make a different resolution?
Well, no, mayor, my mo- my motion was to amend the supplement to include a verification on the resolution for people receiving unemployment.
Well, that, that's the first one, which is not on the agenda, eh? That's a separate resolution and it's not on the agenda.
I, I would withdraw my res- my motion. I, I would make a motion to approve this one and, uh, I would like in that motion, uh, well, I would like to take it, best to consider comprising the next one into next meeting, I'll put it on the agenda. So, I'll make a second supplement.
Did you make a motion to approve the resolution that's in front of you right now? I, I didn't hear you.
I withdraw the res- the motion I made previously.
Okay, we have a resolution on the table for agenda item number one.
I'll make the motion to approve agenda item number one.
So. We need a second, Dan.
Uh, wait a minute, I, my phone was cutting out here, so I would leave it in. What was the proposal that Tony was making?
It's, that's off the table. He's withdrawing the proposal.
And I, I made a motion to approve this supplement.
And trustee Luciano withdrew his prior motion and made a motion to approve the resolution as presented. Now, second, Dan Warren.
Okay, Diane will call, please.
Okay, that was a little bit confusing. So.
Luciano made the approval and I made the second, Dan Warren.
Okay, so Mr. Luciano is, made the motion and Dan Warren, second.
Correct.
Twenty R dash nine eighty-two, number one.
Right.
Okay.
Will call, please.
Anderson?
You there, trustee? Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm here, I'm having trouble here, but yeah, I, I, I'm impressed.
Uh, Warren?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Debold?
Yes.
Luciano?
Yes.
And Brockman?
Yes.
Okay, agenda number one stands approved. Uh, moving on to number two, consideration for approval of a burden award for the twenty-twenty motor fuel tax, street improvements to P T Farrow Construction Company. Mr. Guadalupe.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, so this is, uh, something that we budgeted, uh, for in this, in this current fiscal year. Uh, we budgeted approximately, uh, one point five million dollars. Uh, we received bids, uh, for various roads, uh, throughout the village, uh, last Thursday and, uh, the low bid was, uh, P T Farrow Construction at approximately one point two-two million dollars. Uh, there was, uh, the budget calls for really three different revenue streams, uh, to fund this project, uh, one of which, uh, is M F T allocations, which are projected to be coming forward, uh, this fiscal year. Uh, we received word, uh, from the state a short time ago that, um, that we should anticipate a negative impact to our May M F T distribution, uh, due to COVID nineteen. Uh, I think the most, uh, prudent approach for us at this time would to proceed with this program, however, to scale back the scope by approximately three hundred thousand dollars and that would be accomplished through removing, uh, Sharp Drive and Center Court from the list of roads that would be repaved. Um, so, the dollar amount, um, is, uh, it's a little over, uh, nine hundred, uh, and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and that would by and large utilize other revenue streams, uh, than M F T. Uh, we have, um, money from last year, uh, that we didn't spend, um, about three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, as well as, uh, money carried forward from our capital projects fund. Uh, so, the recommendation is to, uh, accept the bids, award the project to P T Farrow and then to reduce the scope, uh, we would proceed with a reduced scope then that would not include Sharp Drive or Center Court. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
No, I just had, uh, I talked to Jim, uh, about this today in the earlier, um, and so, you know, it's a good deal. We need to move forward with keeping our roads in shape. Um, it's, those roads that were taken out aren't that really generally used. One, one kind of is, another one isn't. So, it, it's not like it's in a neighborhood. It's in a white commercial area, so I don't think it's going to have a big impact on things. And, uh, if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number two with the, uh, amended, uh, as, as Jim referred to, the nine hundred thousand.
Debold, a second.
Okay, Diane will call, please.
Debold?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Luciano?
Yes.
And Brockman?
Yes.
The, uh, business item number two stands approved, moving on to number three. Consideration for approval of a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code. This is the twenty-twenty M F T program, uh, Mr. Welsh, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Good to talk to you all. It's been a while. Hope everyone's doing well. Um, I, uh, I, if, if it's okay with you all, I'm going to handle items three and four together. They're really housekeeping items that I come to you with, uh, every year. Um, the, the resolution, basically, all that does is it appropriates a certain amount of money for the village to use for M F T. It doesn't lock them into having to spend it. You can spend zero, you can spend five hundred grand to just appropriate that money so that you can, uh, you can use that most M F T dollars. Uh, the other item, which is item number four, is the engineering, design engineering and construction engineering agreement, uh, for the, for the M F T project. So, covers, uh, the design engineering that we, uh, and bidding that we recently completed as well as the construction observation that we do, uh, as the project's being constructed. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, that you may have.
My question would be, Dave, can we take these two together, Dave?
Yes, yes, you can, mayor, yes. So, you can do it.
I don't think, uh, Diane, what was your fee? Uh, twenty-five thousand? Is that what I'm seeing?
It was twenty, it was twenty-five for design and forty-five for construction, so a total of seventy thousand.
Okay. All right, I, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, item number three. Uh, wait a second, read, and, uh, same with item number four, wait a second, read.
Debold, a second. The items three and four.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, Diane will call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Luciano?
Yes.
And Debold?
Yes.
Okay, business item three and four stands approved, okay? Uh, business item item number five, uh, a lot of discussion, I hope it's been had back and forth, uh, and, uh, talking to Mr. Guadalupe, but, uh, discussion of the Black Road and Shorewood Drive intersection project, uh, Mr. Guadalupe, I'm not bringing this up to date, but, but that's all.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, so, as you probably recall, several months ago, the board approved a contact, a contract with P T Farrow, uh, to construct improvements at this intersection. Uh, really thus far, um, the only work that's been done is related to relocation of utilities. Uh, that work is still ongoing. Uh, but given the uncertainties that COVID nineteen has really posed, uh, for us and for all, uh, communities, um, I asked P T Farrow if they had any flexibility and willingness to perhaps, uh, delay, um, you know, progress on this work or, um, on this project. Um, and they, they were very, uh, understanding of the situation that we are in and have offered several different approaches that we could consider. Um, the one that, um, and those are outlined in the memo that I provided, the, uh, the one that I'm recommending, um, is the one that would, um, I think, provide us the greatest amount of flexibility, um, but still allow us to accomplish this project, um, in the next year, a year and a half. And that would be to, uh, not proceed with the project as scheduled. Uh, basically, we would, uh, push it off until, uh, April one of twenty-twenty-one. And this would, um, I think, provide the, the maximum kind of, uh, financial flexibility that we could really benefit from at this time, um, but also keep this project moving forward. Um, so, if there is, uh, a consensus to follow that approach, uh, which we're just delaying it, then I would ask a subsequent question. Um, but before I get to that subsequent question, I think I'd, I want to open it up and see if, does anybody have any questions or concerns with the recommendation, which is to, uh, not proceed at this time, however, we would enter into a contract, uh, amendment that would, um, explain how we would proceed and basically that would involve, uh, resuming the project at, uh, the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Question, Debold, is, uh, are they going to hold their price for a year?
Yes, the, um, P T Farrow labor prices will not change, um, until June of twenty-twenty-one. So, they will hold those prices and P T Farrow has checked with all their suppliers, um, and all of them, uh, with the exception of one, is willing to hold their pricing, you know, even if we wait until, um, April, um, next April. Um, the, the follow-up question that I wanted to ask you all had to do with one of the vendors, um, who, who produces the mast arms, uh, for the traffic signals. And, um, I can get into that now if you'd like.
Uh, Mr. Debold, did you get the question name all the way?
Yeah, uh, yeah, he said Farrow's going to honor the price for a year, so that's all I wanted to make sure.
This is quick, I have a follow-up question. So, if, um, this project is going to start next spring, but yet I think our plan was initially to do this work while the kids were at home because of the traffic impact. If we hold this off until June, then the prices could possibly change, is that correct? Because if we're only going to hold them until June, that's not true?
Y- yes, what, what they are, are able to do is hold their labor prices and the other material prices that are in the contract with the exception of the mast arms potentially, um, until June of twenty-twenty-one. So, what P T Farrow i- is anticipating is, is a two-week closure of that intersection in order to complete the work. Um, so, in theory, you know, it schools back in session, you know, there would be a disruption at that time, uh, but really that's the only way in order to keep us, um, with a very consistent, you know, contract price, you know, to what was approved by the board a few months ago. Uh, but really, that's the only way in order to keep us, um, with a very consistent, you know, contract price, you know, to what was approved by the board a few months ago.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions?
Yeah, we, uh, Dan Warren, the, uh, utility work won't stop, so that will get completed this year, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, that's what we would expect.
Right, okay.
Okay, uh, if there's any other questions, Jim, are you gonna go on to your second stuff?
Yes, so, thank you. Um, so, the mast arms, um, is one of those major lead items, you know, they're anticipating right now five months between ordering it and completing it, um, you know, being manufactured. So, in order for us to, you know, make sure that we have this aligned properly so that we don't get too far, uh, out of whack, um, my recommendation would be to go ahead and order and have that, have that mast arm production proceed, okay? Um, so that's approximately forty thousand dollars. Um, and the reason I, I recommending that is because, one, it's a major lead time item, and it could be even longer than, than the five months, you know, given the situation we're in, and who knows what, you know, that it's gonna have, um, the impact that'll continue to have on the manufacturer. Um, but the other thing is that this, this particular vendor is, um, is unwilling to hold that price until April one if we don't order it, you know, relatively soon. Um, they would wanna add a ten percent charge, you know, so we're talking four thousand dollar increase, um, because of the delay, you know, it's outside the scope of what, you know, was originally proposed. Um, so, I think, given the, the fact that it would cost more if we waited, um, and the fact that we have a significant lead time, um, the most, uh, prudent approach would be to go ahead and proceed with just that order. Forty thousand dollars, we wouldn't pay it until, you know, the, the, the material was, was completed, um, so we're talking at least five months from now.
No, I agree totally. I, I think that's, uh, we should absolutely go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I'm on board with the change.
Okay, so if, if there isn't any concerns about this, what we will do is Attorney Silverman and I will, um, work with P T Farrow with an amendment to the contract, um, that puts all this into place, and we, we will bring that back to you at the next, uh, board meeting.
Okay, any more questions for Jim on this issue? If not, gonna move on to reports. Uh, trustee Anderson, help the work.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, street sweeping's going on through town. Uh, we've got some plow damage that's still being repaired, uh, in some of the, uh, courts. Uh, valve repair and, uh, restoration in Talabook has been done. Uh, we had a hybrid broken, uh, at fifty-nine and Black here by a car that's been repaired. Uh, also, there's been a communication radio, uh, been replaced out at the, uh, River Road Bus Station. And that's really about it, uh, on public works. I just had one comment, and it was, it's about Kelly's, uh, email about the small business, uh, help. I just hope everybody had a chance to look at that. Uh, I would like to encourage her to go ahead with some of these recommendations that she's made, if we can get a consensus maybe, I don't know, uh, Mayor or, uh, Attorney Silverman are not a, not a place talking about this. But, um, you know, waiting some of the permit fees, uh, and extending sign, uh, uh, temporary sign usage. I think we have to be able to give staff some leeway and give them okay to do some of this stuff instead of waiting for the next, uh, board meeting.
Oh, you know, I haven't seen the, the email. Sorry, unless I missed it, or, or it's involved in the announce, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I agree. Yeah, I agree also. I read it myself, and I think it's a good thing to get a, let's get ahead of it.
You know, I don't, I don't think there's anything that we have to do legally, by my opinion. Uh, I'm not the attorney, but I think we just need to, you know, instruct staff to move forward with some of these, uh, uh, recommendations she's made.
Well, I agree with, especially on some of the sign stuff. I think there's very, there's obviously, uh, leeway within our own departments to say, look, we're not gonna, you know, these workers aren't gonna fine anybody in that regard. It's like, look, we know there's some variables out there for people to get some signage out there. It's positive exposure that what they are doing for modified hours and whatnot.
Okay, hey, Dave, can we take action on this one? It's not on the agenda.
Well, I, you know, I, I'm at, I'm at a bit of a loss, 'cause I didn't see the, uh, email either, but I guess, um, you can certainly, uh, I, I would think, provide a consensus for the staff to take appropriate measures, and if we, you know, then we can look into it. If we need to follow that up with some formal action at the next meeting, we could certainly do that and ratify any action that was taken.
Okay, sounds good to me. I mean, it sounds like the, the people who did get to read it, uh, and, uh, are all on board with, with the actions that Kelly recommended.
Yeah, yep.
Yes.
I also read it, and I thought it'd be a good idea to do something about it.
Okay. But it sounds like, uh, Mr. Carr, I, I would say that that's in your, that's in your daily work right now, okay.
Yes, well, uh, Kelly, Kelly and I will work, uh, together to bring that forward then.
Okay, and currently, the board's given authorization to start that today.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks, uh, thanks to the staff and, uh, looking on it, and, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, trustee Brockman, planning and zoning.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting will be May sixth, and, uh, we have two agenda items. Conditional use to allow truck and trailer repair at three oh one Amund Dodge by onsite truck and trailer repair. That's a continuation of the public hearing that we started a couple of months ago. And then we'll also have a conditional use to allow an indoor auto sales facility at two oh seven Earl Road, Unit C, by on-the-go internet auto sales. So, and Kelly and Adley have set the meeting up, uh, like we're doing tonight on the phone, so hopefully that'll work as well as this one does. So, that'll be on, uh, May sixth, seven o'clock. And I wanna agree with Dan and everybody else that, uh, Kelly's email, it was, had a lot of good things in it, so I would, uh, urge her to go ahead and get some of that stuff started immediately. And that's all I got, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Uh, trustee Kirkland, parks and earth league.
Thank you. Uh, just a reminder, all playgrounds and equipment equipment at all the parks within the village will remain closed and off limits as ordered by the governor. In addition to playground equipment being closed, group activities and gatherings are highly restricted. Social distancing needs to be practiced even while out in the park. The community garden will open on May first. And I just, and I have a comment that goes back to the first agenda item, only because I couldn't get my comment in earlier, so I just wanna ask that, remind everybody that at the last meeting we were told, uh, trustee Luciano asked the table the resolution. And if you recall, we were told at that time that you wanted to get something on the books so we could get things started. If we wanted to come back and tweak it, we could do that. That's what he's trying to do. So, I just ask that if this is an agenda item at the next meeting, that everyone comes with an open mind. That's my ask. And that's all I got for tonight.
Well, apparently, if we're gonna comment on another agenda item, I guess I'm gonna have to comment on it myself. Let me get these measures. Okay, we did, we did talk about that, and we did talk about, uh, adding to it or taking away. The biggest talk about it was who would be included. And, and that if, if we saw, I say once, if we saw that this didn't completely start out and overrun the, the, uh, staff, which was important to me, that we didn't have so much come in that, that they couldn't handle it in this situation. And we wanted to get other people involved that might be hurting even more. So, the whole thing was said, if we can get this started to find out how this bill is gonna start to unroll, if it's not a problem and it looks like it's working, which I check with the staff quite often, and they said that, no, it wasn't that much of a problem, then we start talking about, let's bring in more people into this by getting, you know, and how would that be done? Okay, now, here's a quote. Okay, I feel that offering those in need who apply and meet simple objectives, all requirements with no exception to the requirements would be best way to do it. Okay, this will make it easy to administer and not take a lot of staff's time. That's Mr. Luciano's quote. Okay? I said, you claim we are not the good stewards of taxpayers' dollars. These are not taxpayers' dollars, these are fees, that we waive all the tax. Using the word taxpayers' dollars is probably not, not accurate. Okay, uh, so what I tried to put in place was with the staff, was to, to add more people to the program before we even get the first bills out. That was the idea. But phase it in to the point where we're not overloading the staff by putting in all these spec, you know, specifications that people have to write in for, and Mr. Luciano or, or, or Mr. Carr has to verify. We don't need to be putting that on the staff. So, that's, that, that's all the things that were being said. I didn't say we would take what we did and tweak it. We would put that in place. And then we could come in with another, uh, program to pick up more people. And what are we doing? What did we just do tonight? That's exactly what we did. So, don't be putting words in my mouth. Hey, any other questions about agenda item number four?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, Mayor, because I was under the total understanding that this could be supplemented at later date, and that's why I was questioning urgency to get it done. I'm all in favor of not putting a burden on the staff, and there are several ways that I mentioned that we would put a burden on the staff. And I'm, don't put words in my mouth, because I was concerned about the supplement of, or the unemployment compensation being more than they earn. And I do think it is bad stewardship for us to reward or give relief to people who do not have reduction in income, and that's my opinion. And if you, that's where I live at.
There's opinions that people have out there that don't want more face masks. There's opinions about people that don't wanna be locked down. There's, but we pass that, we pass that, that, that ordinance with the understanding that we could supplement it, Mayor. Only from you. Okay, uh, we'll wait past agenda item number one. And, uh, trustee Kirkland, are you done with your report? Trustee Kirkland, are you done with your report?
Yes, I said I was.
Well, if you had, you had another question that you put on the end of it, so you weren't quite done. Uh, trustee Luciano, citizen advisory.
Uh, the citizen advisory committee meeting for April was canceled due to the governor's, uh, mandate. And, uh, since the governor has, uh, extended the stay-in order till May thirty-first, two thousand twenty, we'll, we will be canceling the May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty citizen advisory committee meeting. Since we do not have meetings in December months, we'll try to resume meetings in September of two thousand twenty. That's all I have.
Okay, uh, I wanna make a motion to adjourn, just note that the, the, uh, uh, the next meeting, there was, uh, there was nothing on the agenda for it, so, uh, I cancel it. And, uh, that, that this next bill is board meeting, please, okay, this is the citizen, open meeting. I'm sorry, you're breaking up, Mayor, I can't hear you. Uh, the open meeting, that, that we have usually after this meeting, has, that, that was canceled because there's, there's nothing on it, okay? And we got in most of our dialogue on these items that are important, on these new, these new circumstances, so I'll entertain motion. I'll entertain.
Hold on.
Okay, uh, Diane, roll call please.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear who made the motion and who seconded.
I think Anderson made the motion, and I think it was Kirkland who seconded.
Sounds good.
Am I right? Okay. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Debold?
Yes.
Luciano?
Yep.
Would Betty stay safe? This meeting is begun.